Good afternoon. We are now going to recess as the Board of Supervisors. That was a quick meeting this morning.[57.12][57.12](Laughter). Actually, what we did is we had a board meeting this morning that we had met with legal counsel regarding labor and legal issues. So I'm going to turn the gavel over to Karen Aboud, the supervisor who's in charge, president of our redevelopment authority. Karen, here you go. You want the clacker? Okay.
Ellen, I'm going to call to order the redevelopment authority, and if you would call roll.
Member Bonkowski, member Crowell, member McKenna, member Schur, Chair Aboud. You have a quorum present, Madam Chair.
Moving on to item 18 on the agenda. This is time for public comment. You can address anything you would like at this time, or hold it to the specific items as we come to them. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to item number 19. And Lee, are you going to take us through this?
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Lee Plemmelt, Community Development Director. I do have two items on the redevelopment authority agenda this afternoon. The first one is general overview of recommendations. The second item we'll discuss is specifically proposed Third Street Plaza, so just a little bit, just so those talking about, no, there's, there are two separate items. The first item is to accept recommendations from the redevelopment authority Citizens Committee regarding long-term priorities for the use of undesignated infrastructure funds and other uncommitted redevelopment funds. At the initiated by, RAC really initiated this process of wanting to bring recommendations to the Board of Supervisors in terms of what potential projects and potential use of undesignated redevelopment funds going into the future. So to that end, on, at their meetings in August and September, at the first meeting, we had some discussion, the members of RAC kind of came up with some ideas, a list of which are all up there on the screen, for some various potential uses for redevelopment funds. And then at the second, at their second meeting, when they discussed this, which was in December, they went through and everybody ranked their priorities, and we came up to, to the priorities as listed up there for, for order of importance and, and as to use the funds. And I'd like to just briefly go through, oh, and each one of these, in your packet, there's a little bit more of description. Each one is related to specific policy or policies within both redevelopment area plans. Those are listed in there. And I'd like to just briefly go through each one of these, just, just as a little bit further explanation besides the one-line explanation. So, so the projects that are up there, the first one that came to the top of the list was a construction of a, of Third Street Plaza. That's the plaza between, the area between Carson Street and Curry Street, where events are frequently held during the summer. It's frequently closed. And then, again, the next item is related specifically to that project. Number two is sidewalk improvements in the redevelopment area. And again, this was, this was general sidewalk improvements outside other projects already being done, such as Carson Street, just the need for general sidewalk improvements in the area. The third one being is downtown street lighting, again, outside of what the Carson Street or, and/or other approved projects would do, but more consistency and just better street lighting generally throughout the redevelopment area. Fourth was completion of the Fuji Park Fairgrounds sign. Number five is directional signage throughout the area. Again, some directional signage will be included as part of the Carson Street things, but again, this would be anything in addition to that, that downtown core and that project that's already in the works. Number, number six is the Brewery Arts Center Plaza, Street Closure Event Plaza. The Brewery Arts Center's been talking about the closure of the street between the Events Center and the Performance Hall, and creating an entertainment venue and park and plaza there. Special event funding, which is, which is done annually, is number seven. Incentives, number eight is incentives to develop vacant properties. We've had incentive programs in the past for redevelopment. Those were terminated, or at least stopped indefinitely in 2010, but, and that's relatively low on the list. Number nine is utility extension existence for, for new development, and finally, economic study for vacant buildings, such as a Kmart or former Toyota buildings. So these priority, these recommendations are forwarded to you, and they're intended to be used by the redevelopment authority as a guide for how to budget for available funds going, going into the future. It's not a list, it's not that there was some discussion about this at RAC, and I should point out that the current RAC chairperson, Lori Bagwell, is here, and she can add on at the end if I've missed anything, or have any other, not get quite getting the flavor of RAC's discussion. But while it's a list and it's, it's prioritized, it's not necessarily you have to go down the list, you know, we talked about opportunities that come up, that, that things might change based on what current opportunities become available, such as matching funds or other things. There might be some key things that, down lower on the list that you might do before things higher on the list. But again, it's recommendations of priorities for the board to consider. I've also included in the packet budget projections, estimates, from the Finance Department for the next five years. In the last page of your packet is that five-year projection, and I, I've highlighted it with a box, the infrastructure, the undesignated infrastructure projects, funds, that would be projected. Kind of everything else in the budget is assumed to be status quo, which, with some slight salary increases. Of course, this is just an estimate, it's based on some assumptions that he had to make to do this estimate. But if everything else being status quo, and some moderate growth in, in property, tax revenues, and other things, it, it looks like we would have, the redevelopment budget would have about 1.5 million over the next five years in aggregate available funds to use. So that was the purpose of that projection being included in there. At this time, that's the presentation. We're asking you to accept the priorities. You could, of course, modify them, or take them otherwise how you want, but the request is to, just to accept the recommendation priorities.
Thank you, Lee. I'll open this up to the board for discussion. Bob?
Just some questions, maybe on the financial statement, Lee, when you're with me here. On the, first of all, picky point, infrastructure is spelled with an A and not a U. Okay. Sometimes I pronounce it infru- infrastructure.
I'm looking right, I'm looking at Nick, just for the record.[521.01][521.01](Laughter).
Who are you looking at? For the record, it was Nick P., not Nick S.[528.16][528.16](Laughter). I can get that from the Marines, but, you know, all right. Help me under, and I know the answer to this, but help me understand the difference between the administrative costs on, under salaries and benefits, and the relationship, if any, to the general fund internal service charges.
Okay. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
What's the relationship, if any, between the administrative costs and the general fund internal service charges?
There's no relationship between these costs and the internal service charges. The internal service charges, basically what we do in December is we have a consultant come, and they, they analyze how much time is spent doing redevelopment things by different parts of the organization, i.e. finance. We do the budgets.
Yeah, I got, I got all that. I'm just wondering, some of that is administrative, though, that, that is done that way, because there are administrative costs that are associated with internal charges, I would think, anyway.
Yeah, probably most of that, most of that internal service charge is the, is the administrative. It's, it's the charges.
So this administrative, the line item under here, 5% per year, is administrative for who?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That administrative, that administrative cost is, doesn't have anything to do with the internal service charges. Those are direct salaries and benefits that are charged to the redevelopment authority. I actually have, I have the, if you want me to tell you exactly whose charge it, I could tell you.
No, I just want to make sure that there's, that we're not, what I was concerned about, maybe there's a duplication between administrative charges as included in the, under salaries and benefits, and the administrative charges included under the internal service charges.
No, the internal service charges are not directly charged to the budget, whereas those administrative, those, that administrative costs are directly charged to the budget.
And, and professional services, and services and supplies, professional services, that's just at the bottom of the page?
Yeah, you'd have to ask Lee, that $20,000, I'm not sure exactly who, what we use for that $20,000.
What, what is that?
That's for, that's for contracts, what we, what we currently project in uses is actually about $10,000 this year for contracts, for, for design, for advertising, various redevelopment.
And, and the brick rent, what does, where do we get the rent from?
Right, that's their portion of the, the bond payment, basically, that we, that we just, we issued.
Okay, so this is an internal charge, too. This is rent that redevelopment pays for the, because the, we own the building. We're just paying off the note, or the contract.
Correct.
Okay. Publications, what's that all about?
I can answer that more. I don't, it's a large number. It's not magazines. It, it was, it's software, programs that are used for the Business Resource Center to, that have, and there's some various ones in there, Lynda.com, that's a training one, but there's also some specific business-related information, software packages, that we pay licenses for. For, for lack of a better place to put it, it's under publications in the budget.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair.
Brad?
And Lee and Nick, I'm not sure which one of you will answer this, under services and supplies, under other expenditures, special events and activities, Nevada Day, and Farmer's Market, and tree lighting. Do we have an obligation on these items, or are they discretionary that we just approve every year?
They're discretionary, right. And I think we bring those to the authority every year, and they agree to either pay, fund them or not.
And then, on the three incentives, the Michael Hole incentive, the Big Five, Big Lots incentive, and the Got Chucks incentive, Nick, do you remember off the top of your head how far out those incentives go?
The Michael Hole incentive, I think gets paid off in 20, 2020. The other ones are longer than that. Do you remember? Are they 15 or 20 years? Yeah, so they, the Got Chucks one just started, I think, last year.
Isn't that tied to the lease, which is a 10-year lease?
There was some, you know, and not having that in front of me, I think there, I think there was something tied to the lease, but I'm not sure. I think it was 15 years. We looked at. Right, and I believe the Big Five. I know it's longer than this period, so that's why I didn't really pay that much attention. I mean, I have the documents back in the office, so I could probably tell you if you need to know.
So, looks like the Michael Hole incentive in six years is going to free up some money, but the other two incentives go out for quite a while.
Correct.
And those ones were obligated.
Correct.
Okay. And my only other concern on this, looking at the financial statement for the redevelopment authority, is that expenses are exceeding revenue increases, so I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on. That's obviously not sustainable, so.
Right, well, you have to understand that, basically, that infrastructure project number is, is kind of the plug number, and we're maintaining a $200,000 ending fund balance. So I'm not sure where you're seeing that the revenues are exceeding, or expenditures are exceeding, exceeding the revenues.
Revenues are scheduled to increase by 3% per year, and expenses look like they're going up 5% a year.
Well, those are just those specific expenses. The services and supplies we basically have left, most of the expenses are flat.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean, if you look at the infrastructure project number, that number's increasing. So that's, that's kind of where, that's, that's the plug to make the ending fund balance equal 200,000. So that number's actually going up. It's going up, well, it went down, it's, we're projecting it to go down next year, but then it's starting to go back up again. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. And then, Lee, just a suggestion, as we go through this process, on the priorities. I personally would like to have each member of the board be able, have an opportunity to go through, and either say that they agree with the priorities, or come up with what their priorities may be.
John?
On here it has, Michael Hole incentive, $480,000. How much revenue does that generate, and also, how much redevelopment revenue does it generate?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
More or less than 480? Does that go to the general fund? Does it go to the city, or to the redevelopment fund?
Right, so basically, what we did is we incentivized Michael Hole, the $4.8 million, and what he did is that, that was a incentive for him to stay in Carson City and build his, his new dealerships there. So it would be a lot more than 480,000 cost to us if he would have taken those dealerships and moved them to Douglas County, because we would have lost all of his revenue. So, I mean, it was basically a commitment agreement for him to stay in Carson City. So we, what we did is we used, we used money that we had in the general fund, we transferred it over to the redevelopment authority, and the redevelopment authority incentivized Michael Hole. So what we're doing is we're paying back the general fund for that $4.8 million of incentives over, over, it was a 10-year period. So we're not, I mean, you're not required to do that. I mean, we, we suggest that you do it in order to make the general fund whole, because the general fund was the original source of that money. So, you know, as far as, you know, how much we're getting, I mean, it's hard to say. We're, you know, he's probably, I would think, 10 to 15% of our sales tax money every year, just, just his company, I would think, and, you know, our sales taxes, just sales taxes are probably in the $20 million range. So I would say he's 200 to 300,000 a year. Is that 10%? Just doing off the top of my head, no, it's $2 million, excuse me. Right, now, he might not be that much. He might only be, he might be 5 to 8%, probably, of the total, which would be, you know, a million or so. I mean, I mean, we rely on car sales quite a bit in this community. I mean, it's, it's 25% of sales, so it's a big deal, between him and Toyota. I mean, he's, well, he's got, you know, three pretty big dealerships, so it would have really been a big hit to the community if we had lost those dealerships.
Given the Nevada tax structure, sales tax is probably the most important tax.
Sales tax and property tax, probably about equal, I would say, to us.
Okay. Is there any incentives out there that could generate revenue similar to what Michael Hole does? Would it be worthwhile to have a fund sitting there, just in case somebody showed up and we could incentivize them so that they came to Carson City?
Well, I'm sure there's probably things we could probably do, but I don't believe the board has elected to do that. Haven't they decided not to offer these incentives? Wasn't that, isn't that, I think that's redevelopment authority policy now?
We decided not to fund the incentives, because they were going to houses and businesses that went out of business after a year or two. We delayed the implementation of that for Big Five and for Got Chucks.
Correct.
And that was the last, Got Chucks.
Got Chucks was the last.
Was the last one that we had, so that we could fill them all.
Correct.
But once again, take Got Chucks for an example. We take incentive money, we have a pot of money sitting there, and we can bring the retailers that people want to the city, we can bring the businesses that people want to the city. So wouldn't it be a good idea to have a fund?
Okay, that, that would be a board policy decision?
That's actually number eight on the priority list, so we're going to get a chance to talk about it.
It would work for me. If you could bring businesses in, I'd be all for it.
I don't know if it's exactly number eight, but we can talk about it.
Jim?
Just a follow-up question, going back to the expenses, salaries and benefits, parks and administration, a couple of, I'd want to ask a couple of additional questions, besides who gets the money and why are they getting paid, and for what purpose. Are we paying health and benefits and retirement out of redevelopment for those individuals who's receiving the salary?
Yes. Now, we, this was, this was done kind of before, we've, we're going to be actually probably doing some augmentations to these, to these amounts, because we had, we did have a parks person that was doing the medians. Basically, he was a full-time person, and he, he left the city sometime in the summer. And I don't believe that position has been filled. I believe we're looking at other ways to outsource perhaps that function. And I think there's going to be some changes to the administrative amounts, too, that we just haven't gotten, we haven't gotten to, we haven't, we haven't augmented it. Because I believe part of the deputy city manager position is in that, is in that amount. And when we did these, this analysis, this was done probably back in April or March, we've gotten direction from the city manager to kind of take those, take that money out. So there could be more money, less money in the salary and benefit line item. We just, we just have to get back together and do the augmentations, and then we'll, we'll redo the budget. Again, this was done, you know, when we, when we did the original budget for, for 2015, which was probably done in February or March. So there'll be, there'll probably be some changes, and those numbers will probably go down. I suspect the, on the park side, I mean, I mean, that function is still necessary. I mean, it's still necessary to do the work that they were doing, but there might be different ways, and might be cheaper ways to do it. I mean, is that, is that fair? So.
With the, the narrowing of the street, would that not negate the, the need for this one individual's to do the medium, because we're going to have, all of that area is going to be redone, and that's, we're going to have the bid district from the property owners coming in?
Correct.
So this, necessarily, that position probably, maybe, we won't even need down the line because of everything that's going on.
That's correct, that's correct. So I think, I think this is probably, you know, the worst-case scenario, this infrastructure, that infrastructure number. I think it probably could get, it could go up, because we'll probably pull some more expenses out of the redevelopment authority. That's, that's my.
I understand the salaries being paid out of redevelopment. I'm just curious as to health and, and the retirement of that individual's being paid out of redevelopment. Is that usually the course of how we do these things, is coming out of?
Yes.
A fund like this, it would pay for retirement as well?
Yeah, it's, it's a cost, it's, it's an administrative cost.
Okay.
I mean, if we have, it's the same thing as a gas tax, and the gas tax fund, there's people in there, all the, all the benefits come out of that fund as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Nick, to clarify, that's a percentage of time spent occupied in redevelopment area, dealing with those issues, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the board? I'm going to open it for public comment. Lori, did you have anything to add as chairman of the RAC? Okay, all right. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board, and do we want to, Brad, do you want to start going down the line?
I don't know that I agree with the, the priorities that have been forwarded from the RAC committee, so I'll just quickly go through the way I would place these. And the first three wouldn't change. Let me know when you're ready, Lee. Can we record these?
I don't have a spreadsheet.
Is there a way that we can record these? Because otherwise, how are we going to make a motion?
Are we gonna, are we reprioritizing these?
I'm asking to, yes.
I thought this was just to accept the RAC's priorities.
Well, that's what they're asking us to do. I'm not agreeable to that.
I'm just asking, wouldn't it just be yea or nay?
It could be.
Okay. But, I mean, if you want to reorganize all these, we, I'd have to have, I got a lot of questions on each one. If we want to reor, if you want my opinion of where I'm going to prioritize these, we're going to have a long discussion about how the funding's coming through. I think there's more to it than just.
These are recommendations coming to us from a Citizens Advisory Committee. We're the redevelopment authority, so we get to make the decision. So we're ultimately responsible for what we approve, and if I don't approve this, then I'm not going to approve it.
Just a thought, is it, could you look at this and have a further discussion for our own priority? Because I have, if we're going to go through this, I probably have a lot of questions about each line item, of how we're going to get there being a priority. If that's open for discussion, maybe we could have it later and just accept this, not saying it's ours, but we can accept redevelopment's priority list. I think that's what they're asking us. I didn't know we were going to reclassify all of these in our own priorities.
I think I'd look to the city manager and say, should, should the motion be to go, to look at this list for a further discussion, or do we table this for a later time?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking over, Lee, because I, I think if that is the desire of the redevelopment authority, we could probably bring this back, if, if you want to have that type of a detailed discussion. I don't know if that would, I, I still think we'd be able to bring item 20 before you. I don't think that would affect it. So if that's the desire of the, of the redevelopment authority, we could bring it back.
Bob, did you want to come?
Well, suppose, I mean, I, I think I see what's going on here. Suppose we did this, suppose we accepted a motion, or you accepted a motion, just for talking purposes, to accept the first priority, number one, and that's it, and then we hold the others for the next meeting. That way we could, because I don't know if there's any dispute here today about using these funds for, at least I don't, I haven't heard of any, about the Third Street. So we do number one, and then we hold the rest, and then we'll do, you know, satisfy Jim, Brad, we can go through in detail what, what the RAC has said, and I think we'd like to have the RAC committee back, you know, or the chair, or whoever. She's not going to be a chair anymore, but she can help.
She can volunteer.
You'll volunteer. You know, to kind of help us get through their thinking a little bit, and so it's not all on Lee. That's my two cents. I don't know if it works or not.
I would have a tendency to agree with that. Can we try with a motion and see where that goes?
Yeah, I'll try. I'll, I'll, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd tee up a motion that says, I've moved that we accept the recommended project priority number one, from the redevelopment Citizens Authority, and to hold and advance the priorities for the remaining Citizens Committee recommendations for a later date, when we will take them up in more detail.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Lee, we'll go on to the next item.
Okay, Vern Cron is going to join me for this item to give a presentation, and this does tee up the next item a bit. This, this item is action to approve and, for the redevelopment authority to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to authorize the expenditure of $271,942 from the current fiscal year redevelopment revolving fund, and to authorize another $218,058 from the fiscal year 2015-16 redevelopment fund, subject to approval of that future budget by the Board of Supervisors, approving a total of $490,000 to design from the redevelopment fund to construct a pedestrian in Vets Plaza on Third Street between Carson Street and Curry Street. And I think importantly, and I'll get to this later, and part of your action is to direct staff to, to present conceptual and final designs to the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee for review and recommendations. So as, as you saw in the last item, there's, there's been an opportunity presented, and, and RAC has teed up and recommended that their, construction of the Third Street Plaza is a top priority for redevelopment. With that action by RAC, through the city manager's office and very staff, and various other staff members, we got together with the property owners, with, which is actually one property owner of the properties on either side of Third Street, the Lopiccolos, to vet this idea through them, look, look at what they thought of, of doing this project. This is a public, this is a public place, it's a public street, it would be a public plaza, it's a place where there's lots of public events, but obviously, the, the property owners that have the property on Third Street and the businesses are the most directly affected to this. So city staff has worked with them to, to come up with some concepts, to, to get to the level to where public works could get cost estimates for the construction of a plaza, and to be able to get to this point, to bring it to you. So with, with that, as you could see up there, the proposed funding sources for this are the $490,000 that are in the action we're requesting you to make under this item from redevelopment. Through the discussion with the Lopiccolos, and they brought in the, also, and the Lopiccolos are here, and also the McFadden family, who are the former owners and redevelopers of the St. Charles Hotel, that's, that's the, that's the building there that's on the corner of Third Street and Carson. Through, through those discussions, we've, we've learned that there- Through, through those discussions, we've, we've learned that there's a very generous donation offer of $125,000 directly going towards the construction of this plaza from, from private donations. And, and they can talk a little bit more about that. In addition, and then finally, the public works utilities, again, it is a complete tear-up street reconstruction, at which time this, this is one of those streets that has the old water sewer lines and drainage. So pub, the, the uti, the cost of utility, replacing those lines while the street's torn up, that's the, that's the additional $74,000 in the budget there for, for this project.
Are those funds required in order to complete the Third Street? Or could you just do Third Street without incurring those costs?
If you tore it up and replaced it, you would do it without incurring those costs. And you would, then you'd still have the old pipes under there and when they break, you tear up the plaza to replace them. So that's.
Well, I think one of the, I mean, not to belabor it, but I mean, getting right down to the heart of the thing, the, the question is whether or not, because there's an interplay going on here, the question is whether or not the, the, the public works section is being, you know, an expenditure out of, whether or not RAC is recommending expenditure out of public works or not. And I think what's going on here, you correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, is that Darren back there, if I put words in your mouth, you let me know. Darren says, hey, if you're tearing up the street, I want to fix the water lines or the utilities under there. But you could, if you didn't want to, you could just build this and then when we're replacing the water lines anyway, tear it up again.
That's accurate.
All right.
Yes, that's accurate.
So, so RAC is not making, the citizens committee didn't make a recommendation to, to, to take $73,000 out of public works funds. That's coming directly on an unrelated issue, but somewhat related because it's, it's under the street. But it's not their recommendation, that's, that's a recommendation from public works that, that is consistent with their overall plan of replacing pipes and utilities under both Carson Street and, and the full area downtown where we have problems.
Right.
Is that right?
I'll get to the RAC recommendation issue, so.
Oh, you're going to get to it.
Which is the funding, so yeah, discuss that.
Sure got to it a little quicker there.
I haven't discussed that yet.
I wouldn't have gotten there.
But.
But I, did I just give it?
But, but yes, yes, you got it. And looking at the cost estimates based on the conceptual plan and what you see above ground, that's where, that's where we started, do, with public works doing the cost estimate, how much does it cost to do everything on the surface? That's the $490,000. That's a, that gets you a basic plaza's, pedestrian plaza space. Above ground, that's tearing it up and doing, that's, that's the bricks and some, some new trees and, and those types of things. If, so that, that's what it would cost to do that if you just did the surface and didn't rip it up and do the, go, go deeper and replace the line. So the, so the $74,000 is just the line replacement.
Lee, could I interrupt you for just a minute?
Sure.
So that $490,000, in terms of continuity of design with what's proposed for the downtown streets and all the rest, is this design cohesive with what's planned?
Well, Vern is going to get into the conceptual design a little bit, but the plan is to, is that it will be. So the, so the concept, the level of concept that's in your packet is not the type of brick and the color of the brick and the type of trees. The, the plan is to get this design contract integrated right into the Carson Street contract, because there's both, both, to, to, so it's consistent, not just in appearance, but in design where Third Street meets Carson Street, all those grades have to match, the building actually goes around the corner and so, so that there's some engineering design consistency as well. Which leads me to talk about the RAC.
Hold on, hold on, Lee, I got an interruption for you too. You mentioned that the project was $490,000. Is that correct or is it $615,000?
No, I said the funding sources are $490,000 from redevelopment. That's, that was our basis that we started at to construct.
From the ground up.
A basic above-ground plaza. And stretching the budget, stretching the budget at that number, I mean, I think, but that's, that would be two years' worth of undesignated infrastructure from, funds from redevelopment. That was kind of the cap we gave them to work with for discussion purposes. Again, I think the, as he goes through the design and cost estimates more, I think we look and we learn later that the opportunity to have this $125,000 donation added on that gets you some of the better amenities. It's going to be nicer, the stage will be better, the, you have some potential to do some features that attract more people to that area during the day and night. So that's some added, again, features and above-ground amenities to the plaza.
So the basic project is at the $490 level and then the $125 raises it up to another level, a higher level?
That's a general, just generally what I would say, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Lee, quick question on the sewer and water. We're taking $75,000 out of the public works utilities, why isn't it coming out of the sewer and water funds? If we're replacing those lines, why aren't we using the funding from the sewer and water?
It, it is in fact coming from those two funds.
It is, okay. Because I'm, I'm just reading what it says there, so, but it is out of the sewer and water funds itself, okay. Another quick question, and bear with me. I know, I'm just kind of wondering why this didn't go to the redevelopment committee. I know they had a meeting December 1st. I know there was, you want to expedite this, I understand that. But if it went to the redevelopment citizens committee December 1st, we'd have a meeting December 4th versus the meeting today, we're talking eight days difference. Is there a reason we didn't take this to the citizens committee first? I know the recommendation was this, but they're not getting, we're not getting their input on the citizens level. Is there any reason for that? I'm just curious.
Yes, so let me explain that. So typically, we would, we, we have historically brought these pro, funded projects to the RAC in the past, to redevelopment for a recommendation on specific funding. There's not a long history of that, actually. It's only been in the last year or two that we've had any funds, any additional funds available for these types of infrastructure projects, but, but that has been the typical course. So first of all, the, the main reason is the timing. And you talked about the timing and, and we, plans were not available, this is more recent, this was, these were available just in time to get to this meeting, so going to the November RAC meeting was not an option with this. We wouldn't, we didn't have something for them to look at. With the approval of the Carson Street plan at the first November board of supervisors meeting, to stay on track with that, public works is ready to release the request for proposals for the design team tomorrow and, and has the scope of work in there. We're trying, the goal is to get this into that scope of work so that, so there's some efficiency of, of design and, and, you know, it's the best use of the cost of it, it'd be more cost efficient to include that design work, not, it needs to be integrated. So they wanted to get that into the, into the RFP that's going out, maybe as soon as tomorrow if, if this gets approved with this plaza. So that was the main thing of trying to get it. And then if, and we typically wouldn't want, if we have the RAC meeting the same week as the board of supervisors meeting, that doesn't give us a chance to, for you to have the information ahead of time. That could be done, but it's generally not desirable to do that. So I wanted to point out, and I, and I've taught, and I understand the, the concern, and I've actually talked to a few of the RAC members and I understand, that have had that same concern, and I understand that concern. And so, as I noted, specifically in the motion is to direct us to bring it back, which we certainly would anyway, but to bring it back to RAC for, for conceptual design review and then to make them part of the, all the final design details as they will be with with the Carson Street design as well. It also gives us, gives them a chance to review, and, and so the plan would be to take it to them in January. Should this move forward, the plan would be to take this to them at their January meeting. That would give them a chance to make a recommendation to you on the funding, which, which still would end up being a recommendation to you before you approve the design contract for Carson Street and the plaza. So at any time after that, that could be, I've talked with Darren Schultz about this. If for some reason they convinced you that this should be taken out of the design, it could be taken out of the design entirely. That would be the extreme, but, so the intent is not to keep them out of this. We do want to take it to them, we want to include them, we want their feedback on design. And we will include them through the process. So I think, I hope that answers the question.
It does, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, John?
Just to point out that under the redevelopment citizens authority recommended priorities for 2014-15, this encompasses priorities 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, and 9, this, this project. So let's just deal with the project and approve it and move on. I mean, it's, we could sit here all night saying, help fund sidewalk improvements through the redevelopment areas, priority 2. Priority 3, erect additional street lighting in the downtown, other than the downtown project. So this is covering all the priorities for redevelopment, or most of the priorities for redevelopment. So I suggest we just get into the details of the construction of the plaza and.
And I'm prepared when you are. Vern's ready to move on to go over the design concepts. As I mentioned, the Lopiccolos, oh, I did want to say finally one thing. So in addition to those private donations, that doesn't include additional improvements that the Lopiccolos will be making to the building facades, leasing some new parking back behind their building those, and, and maybe they can cover that in a little more detail, but, but there are some other investment that's going to be made on the private side in conjunction with this. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Vern to go over the project, the proposed plaza.
Thank you, Lee. For the record, Vern Cron, senior park planner. I wanted to share with the board real quickly, most of you know where Third Street is, but, but let me kind of quickly orientate everybody to the graphic that's up above. What you'll, what we have is on the bottom side of the screen, let's see if that's going to help me out here a little. There we go. On the bottom side of the screen is the legislative mall, the big green grass area on the east side of Carson Street, of course. Here to the, on the southwest corner is the Furkin and Fox, of course. We have a number of small businesses along the north side of Third Street. Of course, you can see the parking and of course, the Third Street parking lot to the north. When, when the designs, when the design team, or the design team and the city management team got together with the Lopiccolos, there were certainly some opportunities that we all saw, that we all agreed on. And there were also some constraints that do play into how the design evolved over a little bit of time. Some of the opportunities we really saw was the, with the Carson Street improvements, there's the connection not only to these approved plans that the board has done already, but you also have now the potential of a real great connection to the legislative mall. It's, it's a great opportunity on that end of the downtown to be able to tie the big grass, green areas into a pedestrian plaza. We saw that as really a great opportunity. Blending, Lee mentioned this a little bit earlier in his presentation, blending the Carson Street improvements, not only from a grading perspective, but also from the side amenities, your benches, your lighting, your trellises, the plant design, irrigation systems, your, your ground-level surfaces with pavers and concrete. Great opportunity to make that flow into one space and, and the continuity of design, which I believe is very important. We have the opportunity to remove some parking. If we are going to create the pedestrian mall, the parking obviously is going to have to go away and it does present opportunities for the businesses that are there as well as for the community. The community has embraced Third Street as a, as a, as an event venue and some of these improvements, I think, will really, that we're, that we're going to be talking about in a little bit, are really going to have the opportunity to do that. And of course, parking is always a challenge in the downtown area, and with the Third Street parking lot across the way, it gives a real close opportunity for people who come to event in the Third Street Plaza to do that. Also, depending on how we design the plaza, Curry Street can be an overflow, you know, as a part of the overflow space as a part of event. If you've been down there on a regular basis, they usually put the stage at the west end of the mall and then you have to have, then the event kind of flows back to east toward Carson Street. If you, depending on the design, we believe we've got the opportunity now to even have larger events that would flow out in the Curry and still have that opportunity to take not only the plaza, but possibly blocking off Curry Street as well to be a, a further, larger part of the event. So those were some of the exciting parts that we saw there. Of course, the scale of the space was very good, single-story buildings, two-story buildings create a great opportunity for a sense of scale in a pedestrian space. Some of the constraints we have, and Lee's mentioned those already, is the utilities. And some of you can follow this, but the utilities, we have storm drains crisscrossing down through there. And these are fairly significant box culverts that crisscross, go down through the plaza. We have sewer lines that, that are on the north side of the, of the Third Street. And we have water lines in the middle of the street, and there's even the possibility of underground power going through that street. So that limits the opportunity to do something with, you know, in the center of the plaza, if you will. So that was a constraint we had to deal with. Parking is a challenge, of course. We are going to lose parking, but if you look at the screen, or at least I believe as you look at the screen, you can also see that even though it's very busy around the Furkin and Fox, there is ample opportunity for that parking to spread out and move to the Third Street parking lot. So it is an issue that we want to deal with and I think we can with the things we have down there. The other thing is that this is, is, as much as we like to think about our spaces, this is a fairly small space that we're dealing with. And one of the dangers that you have with a small space is trying to put too much into it. You know, the old proverbial five pounds of sugar in a three-pound sack. So you want to be careful with that also from a design perspective, because you want, if you're going to have a mall, you want it to be open and people being able to circulate very well within it and during an event versus stumbling over things. And the other thing that, that Mr. McKenna mentioned was the fact that the sidewalks down there, ADA access is a big issue that we need to challenge and take, take into account. So those are some of the opportunities and constraints we saw. And from that, working with our city design team and project management team and the Lopiccolos, we ended up, am I going the right way? We ended up with our design. One of the things that we want to do as a part of this design that works really well because of the orientation of the building is to set up what I refer to as, as an axial design for the plaza, so that you'd be able to have the connection with the legislative mall across the street. The, the crosswalk would be reorientated, so it would actually be centered on the plaza. Right now, it goes over, directly over to the Furkin and Fox. We would move that over. So anyone coming across the street from the legislative mall would be centered on the plaza. So that would be centered on the plaza. Then you start from there, when you start working with an axial design, you can start picking up different, you kind of basically are dividing the, if you will, the plaza in half. The Furkin and Fox area basically is going to stay about the same size. And the opportunity for mom and pops to be able to expand their seating is very much of a possibility. And the, what's going to be happening out there as far as the ground plane goes, we're going to be removing the wood deck. We're going to be removing all the old concrete and the asphalt. And so that'll all be replaced with a, a uniform surface out there with concrete pavers, a mix of concrete pavers and concrete surfaces. You can see kind of the hash line that go through the plaza. That's what that represents, is a change of pattern. The idea is that you'd be able to have no little trip hazards, no curbs to trip over. We would also be addressing ADA access issues into the business as well as at the Furkin and Fox. So the idea would be is that you would have your eating areas, very consistent with where they are now, but they would be on concrete or pavers, they would be at, at plaza level. The Furkin and Fox would have a fence around it, but we would also introduce small planters to sit on as well as trees for shade in that particular area. Mom and pops, because of the continuous grade and the removal of the traffic, will be able to expand their eating area if they so chose to do so. Also, so the eating area from a conceptual standpoint stays at the south end, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, the east end of the plaza. One of the, one of the design priorities that we worked on is trying to save all the existing trees that are within the plaza area. That's our goal. And once we get into a little more design, we may have, we may lose one or two, but that's the intent because of shade, that's an important thing. The canopy that those shade trees have, I think, is a very important part of the aspect of the pedestrian space that we want to do. Some of the other things that we looked at, and let me just stop there real quick. So when you start looking at the improvements to the ground plane, the utility improvements underground, saving of the cottonwood, or saving of the trees, the variety of different types of trees we have down there, we're going to be putting brick planters around them for seating areas, that's your basic design. That's what Lee was trying to communicate to you. The $490,000 would pay for that basic plaza. Now, when you start talking about the additional private donation, then you're being, then you're going to be able to raise the bar a little bit. Then you're going to be able to look at introducing into this space the opportunity for a stage, the opportunity for a water feature. Without that additional $125,000, that would be out of our budget reach with the $149,000. And of course, I think replacing, and I know there's some questions about that, I think replacing the utilities under this surface while we have the opportunity in the long run is going to say. the long run, is going to save everybody a lot of time and effort. I just would hate to have not replaced those, and you have a big event that you've planned downtown, and you have something blow up on you, the water comes up out of the ground, the sewer does. That would not be a good experience.
A splash pad.
That would give a unique element to a splash pad. You just didn't have to go there. No, that's okay. So, let me talk about those additional features that we're talking about, that we're really looking at, the $125,000 is going to help us get there for. First, the water feature. I'm calling it a water feature because we haven't gotten so far into the design yet that we really know what we want specifically, but we are looking at an interactive fountain, something that you would be able to go out there, it would be at-grade, so there'd be no issue of somebody, like you would have with a fountain, for example, like a standing fountain with a foot or a foot and a half of water in it, that somebody could get into it and fall into it and potentially drown. So, it's an at-grade, it's an at-grade, it's an at-grade water feature that would be interactive. There would be a way for the community to be able to have jets come up out of the ground, possibly lights it in the middle of the night, which would be kind of fun. This actually becomes, the water feature actually, there we go, here it comes, the water feature actually becomes a focal point of the plaza. So, not only can you see it with the crosswalk here on the axial design that we're talking about, you'll be able to see that from the Legislative Mall, you will be able to see that from the Third Street parking lot, people who are eating here at Mom and Pops would be able to see that, as well as most of the people at the Furkin and Fox, well, actually all the people at the Furkin and Fox would be able to see that. So, this becomes a major focal point within the plaza. They can, it can be either interactive, or you could also, again, just kind of thinking ahead a little bit, you could also have it running on a regular basis. So, you wouldn't just, it could be, it wouldn't have to be always stagnant, I mean, that's stagnant is the right word. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be where, it wouldn't be running all the time. You could run it all the time if you wanted to, you could run it at night with the lights, or you could just have it off to, depending on how you wanted to do that. The other thing that, that goes back to my comment of five pounds of sugar in a three-pound sack, is that if we stayed within the public right-of-way, we would not be able to, in my mind, effectively put in a stage. It would just, it would become too much in a small space. One of the nice things about what the Lopiccolos have offered is that the north side of their parking lot, they are willing to let a stage be built on their property. The stage would be a raised stage. It would also provide the opportunity for a sitting area for people who wanted to sit there and either look at the fountain or play around the fountain. It would be a, if, you know, 18 inches or 24 or 18-inch high stage, the stage would have a cover over the top of it, a shade canopy of some kind, there would also be some sort of rigid rigging up there for, for bands and other things to bring in their lights and be able to attach to, power, those kind of things. Also associated with this stage would be trellises. Let's see if I can get my little, my little friend here to work. At the east side and the west side, you would have a series of trellises, some landscape screening behind it, so the south half of the parking lot would be screened from the plaza. The other reason for the orientation of the stage like this is that it gives you the opportunity for an event, and as we talked about a little bit earlier, using Curry Street as an overflow could work really nicely. So, if you have a large event happening here, you could have, you could close off parts of Curry Street, the crowds could flow out this way as well. You potentially could double the amount of people by this orientation with the band facing this way and playing this way to Curry, toward the fountain, toward Mom and Pops. You could increase your, the amount of people that could attend a community event, anywhere from a third to a half of the amount of people that you could normally get into the plaza if you put the stage at the west end. So, anyway, conceptually, those are the program elements that we came up with. You know, we talked about a number of different things, a number of different alignments and orientations and locations, but we felt that this would, this would be, considering all the different elements that we wanted to try to make this plaza become, this provided us with that opportunity to what I call, to provide a simple, because this, because again, this is conceptual, but I guess, I guess as designers do, they get into this, and they really see this being a simple, historical, elegant plaza that could be created by what we're proposing here. Again, these are something that we've worked through with the Lopiccolos, you know, we're certainly welcome to have input on this. It's just something that we needed to do in order to give the folks over at Public Works the opportunity to throw some square footage together, figure out cost for lighting and demolition and planter boxes and fencing and trellises and stage costs. They needed to know the size of the stage. They needed to know the size of the water feature that we're talking about. All that was important, so that we know that we, we believe, based on the numbers that we've generated at this point, that we could present to the community for the costs that Lee talked about earlier of this project, and feel pretty comfortable with those numbers at this point. So, with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions you might have on the design.
Thank you, Vern. Just a question I have, and I'll open it to the board for discussion as well, and I've had this brought up to me. The fountain is essentially a splash pad, correct? Is that what's being proposed?
I think you want to be careful with those terms. Sometimes when you think about a splash pad, what comes to mind are loops and buckets and those kind of things, and that's not what we're talking about here. Okay, so there's, so I'm calling it a water feature versus a splash pad. Are there similar components that a splash pad has? Yes, of course. You know, there will be water shooting up out of the ground, and you can do, depending, again, on, on how this all works out, these, the components can be timed to the lights, you know, the water can move in different patterns and shapes, but there are no little guns out there that you shoot at people with, there's no tubes that shoot water down as you was run through. At least that's the vision as it is right now. Okay?
All right, thank you. All right, and then, then connected with that thought process was just child safety, how you would protect if kids wanted to play in this, at either end, especially coming onto Carson Street, if there were going to be planters, if that was going to be part of a design thought.
Actually, that's a very good point, and that's part of the reason that the, the feature, the water feature is at the west end of the plaza. One, it also, because this, we're intending this to be a very, very active area, at least that's the envision of it, and it does keep it a little bit separated from the eating areas, but it's also visually close enough at the west end of the plaza that people can enjoy it if they want, but it's far enough away that the noise, which I'm expecting to be a lot of noise and fun, won't necessarily, at least in my mind at this point, hopefully not deter from the eating experience at either one of the establishments. This is an open plaza. We are having the trellises and the stage here separating any kids from this parking lot, but at this time, we are not thinking about any fences or anything else. It's just an open plaza, but that's something that we could consider as we move along. I guess, I'm feeling is that the more open this plaza can be, the better it is for large community events versus fences and other things.
Thank you, Vern. I'm going to open it for board discussion. John?
How many people will be in this plaza at various times? Thousand?
I've, no, I've been down to those events at Third Street, and it's packed. I've never counted, to be honest, but I, I'm not sure I really have a number, to be honest, for you, but lots.
The reason I ask is that you have an old brick, two-story building, you're going to cram a whole bunch of people in there. You ought to look at the earthquake safety of that particular area, not that it's going to happen, but if it did, what would be the disaster? So, I don't know if this, you know, that's something you need to check, to vet before you do this, because you would hate to create a hazard like that.
We can look at that.
Vern, looking at your conceptual design here, is the Curry Street crosswalk also realigned slightly to the left or south from where it is now?
What we're looking at is some sort of, the answer is no, and the reason we can't do that is because of the parking lot to the, to the west. The actual exit of the parking lot is right here, so it would take a redesign of the parking lot in order to move that crosswalk over to the center, so it would match up with what we're proposing here on Carson Street. However, you can still even cross at the existing crossing, crosswalk. This planter will be coming out as a part of the design, so even though it may not be a straight-down-the-shot line of sight because of the crossing here, unless we redesign the parking lot, and that's not a part of the project expense, we just kept the, the crosswalk right here, we're going to take out the plaza, so still any pedestrians on, that are in the Third Street parking lot will very easily be able to come in and still have a very nice view of the entire plaza, and by taking the planter out here, being able to see even over to the Legislative Mall, although it won't be on a pure axis design.
So, the reason I ask is going back to Karen's question about the safety of children who are going to play in the interactive water feature, can the Curry Street and Carson Street crosswalks be raised so that they are traffic calming measures and then signage added going north and south to notify drivers that there's a calming traffic? So, you know, like on Victorian Avenue, how the crosswalks are raised by about four to six inches?
I think we've discussed that, as a possibility of detailed design on Carson Street.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. I would be very hesitant to do it on Carson Street, but possibly Curry Street would be a good spot to put it. Those come with headaches for Public Works, but we could look at it.
Yeah, I understand that they come with headaches, but if one person gets hit by a car down there because they're, they've just come from playing there and they're not paying attention, and they run out in the street, and that's kind of the, what we're creating here potentially, then it would be worth it. So, I think that we need to look at that, because it seems like a simple solution. You're putting in a traffic calming measure, you have signage in either direction, so it puts in place, I think, the most effective safeguards for pedestrian traffic going from the legislative grounds to the plaza to the parking lot on Third Street.
Yeah, I completely agree that we should look at it, and the idea is a professional design consultant, and maybe there's other traffic calming that would solve the problem too, but...
Okay, and then my other question is, do we have estimates on the maintenance cost for the water feature, and who would be paying the maintenance cost?
We have not had a chance at this, at this level to be able to generate a whole lot of maintenance cost for this project at this point. However, in the discussions that we have had, the idea has been is this would be incorporated into the overall maintenance of the downtown area. I'm assuming, sorry.
So, the maintenance costs would be paid by whoever is determined is going to pay them and whatever percentages as part of the bid districts?
Yeah, we don't, you were, yeah, you're, I'm sorry, we just don't have that information for you at that time, at this time.
Jim?
I think Brad brought up some good points about the crossing. I think that's very essential. I'm not too sure about the water feature itself. I'm just wondering, maybe, if you turn back to the other slide, Vern?
Sure.
I mean, what about just a fountain down here, rather than per se the splash pad, but it's not a splash pad? I mean, what about just a fountain down here? And I'm not sure of having a water fountain in front of the stage, I don't know. And is it going to be heated, is it going to operate all winter? And I'm, I'm all for it if the redevelopment authorities, our committee says, "We like it, we're all for it," I would be also favorite. I'm just wondering if it's cost-effective, is it that important to it, rather than just a water fountain down at the other end? Has that been explored?
Hey, Vern, let me, let me jump in.
Yeah.
Supervisor Shirk, I think in discussion with not only the property owners, but with several of the business owners, who, I see at least a couple of them here today, they were very interested in features that would, that would be attractive to young children, to young families, especially during the day, that would attract people, warm summer day, to come down to the Third Street Plaza. That's why we think it's an integral part of the design concept. Is it going to go exactly in front of the stage as depicted here? Possibly, possibly not, but I think the axial design that Vern talked about is certainly going to remain, you know, could it, is it going to go exactly where it is on that particular design concept there? I don't know, maybe, maybe not. But that's the rationale behind the, the water feature.
And Nick, if you could just elaborate on the fact that it's at ground level, so that, I mean, if there's a concert going on or whatever, obviously it wouldn't be on.
Yes, ma'am. There'd be, there would not be protruding pipe work or things like that, be flush with the level of the street surface or plaza surface.
The practical things you need to consider, who's going to supply the restaurants? How are they going to supply them? You've got a water feature blocking off the Curry Street side, Carson Street side, can they come in that way? Is there any parking in there?
There's, there's currently on the, if you look at the northwest corner of the plaza on Curry, there's currently, just right above that, Vern, there is a active loading zone there, and that would remain, and in speaking with the business owners, they're satisfied that that would in fact suffice to be able to supply their businesses. As we step through the Carson Street project as well, part of the draft concept that the board approved last meeting would be additional parking on Carson Street. There's been proposals from some of the business owners that maybe at least one of those spots is a loading zone or some other type of short-term parking, maybe even perhaps a disabled parking spot there. So, there are some options as we go through Carson Street, but there currently is an active loading zone, and that'll remain there on Curry.
So, what you're saying is, is if we approve this, then we have to approve Carson Street so that it'll work?
Well, no, I think it works with the existing Curry Street.
Okay, San Francisco all over again, all right. Who performs the maintenance? These are questions, they don't need to be answered now, there's things to think about. Who performs the maintenance on the property? Who manages the property? That stage is going to be on someone else's property, not Carson City. Does Carson City maintain it? Does Carson City direct it? Does Parks and Rec? Are they in charge of who gets to use it? That sort of thing. The operating, do we have one operator? Do we have several operators? Does the person that rents one property get to use the, get to be in charge of the water fountain, and another person that rents the other property gets to be in charge of the stage? This is city money going into this thing? Who owns the property? Are we going to buy the Lopiccolos property, property so that it belongs to the city in perpetuity, or is this going to have a term of years on it? What's the deal, basically? And then, that's enough, that just, give you an idea of, you present a concept, and generally Carson City has, we manage the entire thing, or we hire somebody to manage it and stay out of it. I don't want to get into a situation where discussions take place and people are unhappy, or one party decides it's theirs and, and their groups, and the other group doesn't get to use it. I assume this will be open to everybody who wants to use the stage, Black Box Theater, whatever.
Go ahead, Lee.
A lot, a lot of questions and not all answered now, but it is our intent, we strongly believe, I think, at this point, that it's going to have to be managed, the city's going to have to be involved in approving. It's going to stay city right-of-way, as you were saying, the stage is going to be constructed on private property, we're going to have to work on those easement issues, certainly with, with the property owner there as regards to that, but any events are going to be into the public right-of-way, which needs to be coordinated through the city, so I'm, I'm thinking that in terms of scheduling, it's still going to need to come through the, through the city for that, like other street, street closures, even though it's, even though streets are already closed. Oh, we also talked about, so actually, good questions, who manages it? Maybe it's not the city, but, and maybe there is a blanket event permit for the summer, we, we talked about those things, so each individually, we don't have to come in individually and get special use permits, or special event permits every week. Those things do need to be worked out, so they're very good questions, but those are kind of some of the discussions we've had.
Well, the other thing you could do is you could have the, whoever's going to operate it, or the property owner, rent the street from the city and make it theirs. City does the improvements, gets paid back for the improvements through rents, and city's out of it. That way, there's no conflicts, or downtown does it, redevelopment does it, whatever. It's just, I don't want to have to hire additional employees to maintain it and not have additional revenue coming in.
No, go ahead.
One last thing on, just going back to your public safety issue, I did want to mention that both, we run this by the Fire and Sheriff's Department, and they've looked at their, any access and distance issues, and they are okay with this, with this design concept. concept.
Well, it's not so much an excess, it's, you're creating an attractive nuisance by having, say, 500, 1,000 people standing there when the earthquake of a lifetime hits. It's not going to happen, but it's something to think about.
You know, another, another item to John's list of things that we need to think about, and that's liability insurance. If the stage is on private property, are both parties going to be required to carry liability insurance? Whose policy is primary if somebody falls off the stage, or gets hurt setting up the stage? Those are all issues that we need to have figured out before we proceed with any final approvals on this.
One other thing, I really like the idea of naming after Bob McFadden. We've got the, we have Texerick Pavilion over here, we've got Delivermore Sports Complex now. Bob was unique, and he was Carson City at that time, and he took a real chance on this hotel, and he actually, I think, in my opinion, saved Downtown.
Is there any more board comment? Then I'd like to open it up to public comment. Rob?
Rob McFadden, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I own a property on Third Street, and my wife owns a property around the corner from that, and we think that this would be great for, for that community. We both lived in those, those houses, and to have a draw Downtown, I think it'd be something that's phenomenal. Meaning, there's, there's things to do now, but there's not really a draw, like a water feature, where you could go down there and hang out with your family, so I think that that would be great. My dad borrowed $2,000 from his dad about 30 years ago and opened his first real estate office at Pop's Barbecue, or where Pop's Barbecue is now, and then he came back seven years later and bought it, and bought the other side of the street, too. He spent a lot of money and a lot of time trying to fix that place up. I think my family heard about this from Jenny, that, that the project was going, and they were a little bit short funding on what, what they'd like to do. They could do the project, but not the way they wanted to, and my family thinks it'd be great to be, you know, a private-public partnership with the Lopiccolos and the Carson City to make this happen, so I think that it's great.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you for your generosity. Jenny, Mark?
Hi, Jenny Lopiccolo.
And Mark Lopiccolo.
For the record, good afternoon. So, we are the property owners being discussed here, and I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to this for us as well, as owners, and it's a big commitment on our part, and, but we have been extremely happy to be a part of the process, and working with all of these folks at the city, and with Nick Morano kind of being a driving force behind this. It's, it's a long, complicated process, and I know you all have questions as well, still, but I think at this point, I believe we're just asking for the boards go ahead on the concept and the funding sources. I do think it is, it could be a huge thing for Downtown Carson City. I think that with this board's support of the Carson Street improvements overall, that it just shows a commitment to this city and to its citizens. We want to be a part of that. We think this can be a really important community gathering place. And I've done all the research on the water feature itself, so, you know, we raise six kids here, so I had to, you know, call, go, kind of go out to them and say, "What are those, what are those things, you know, where, where water comes out of the ground?" And they were all, so that's when I found out, "They're splash pads." So, so from there, I was able to start doing some research. The company that I'm working with on that has done multiple, multiple municipality projects like this. They are very, very familiar with working with Public Works Departments, with the, you know, Water and Sewer Departments, with the Health Department. They have a very unique and very low-cost maintenance, you know, program built into this, and I don't, you know, I don't need to get into all the details of that, but that, finding out the answers to all those questions, none of which I knew going into it, made me think that this is something unique, this will be something fun for families. And since we started talking about this concept, we, we travel quite a bit, and I've probably seen now, you know, it's like when you buy a new car, and then every car you see looks, "It's the car you just bought." Everywhere I go, you know, I was recently in, in the Southern California area, several different cities there, and, well, we've seen, I don't know, probably, I've taken pictures of eight, 10, 12 different ones. The one over at the Legends Mall, I don't know if anybody has seen that, apparently my grandkids play in it constantly. But in seeing all of those, yes, there are signage, you know, of course, you know, regarding safety issues, et cetera, especially for children on almost all of them that I saw, but, but they were all very open, and there was no fencing, or, you know, anything else with them. There were children and adults, you know, kind of playing in them, and, so if you have any questions further about the water feature itself, you know, I know we'll have a lot more information when we come back to you. Just want to say that we're supportive, we're in support. We have, of course, talked to a lot of our business owners and tenants down there, they're, you know, had some concerns as well. It's a pro and con for them as well, but we hope to work out all the issues and make this thing happen.
Well, thank you, Jenny and Mark, for making, or offering this opportunity, that's huge.
Okay, and, and just one last thing regarding the McFadden family. So, two of Bob McFadden's children are here today, you just heard from Robbie, as well as Robbie's wife Heidi. Their, their family, I think, they were probably the first one I called after I thought this might be something real. And the reason I called them is because we were very close friends with Bob. He kind of inspired our vision, along with his vision, of the whole Downtown Carson City. I mean, he got us on board 20-some years ago to go down there and start looking at what it could be, and start, you know, investing in that area. So, I just think that their idea, well, first, they're generous, I was blown away by that whole thing, but, but just the idea of incorporating Bob and kind of dedicating this to his memory, we're very much in favor of. So, that it?
I got nothing to say.
Okay. All right. Any questions for us?
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? I'm going to bring this back to the board, then.
Okay, I have a couple more items. We would need to bring another agenda item forward to approve accepting the donation from the McFaddens and offering them the naming rights?
Yes, and in, in the board agenda item in front of you, we lay that out, that we will, we intend to come back, should you approve this draft concept and the funding sources, we intend to come back with that, as well as with the naming of it as the Bob McFadden Plaza.
And then, Nick, can you kind of briefly go through, I know Lee mentioned that we're hearing this today to try to get it approved in time to incorporate it into the design of the Carson Street corridor, but what about that construction schedules? Would this, would the construction of this Plaza, if approved, happen prior to or subsequent to the potential Carson corridor improvements?
Yeah, I'd like to bring Darren up to talk about the details of the construction, but it's our intent to begin this after the legislative session, so it would be before the rest of the Carson Street project.
And Darren, if you could also address the pros and cons of constructing it prior to or subsequent to the Carson Street corridors? In other words, if we construct the Plaza first, are there potential pitfalls or risks when we come back to construct Carson Street, if we go down that road, so to speak? No pun intended.
Very well, Darren Schultz, Public Works for the record. The first step that we decided to, to make it work the best was to make sure that, that Third Street was designed with and at the same time as Carson Street. We wanted it to be the same design team, working on both of them, to get the continuity of, of the projects. We don't want Third Street to be, we want it to be part of Carson Street, not separate. So, the first decision scheduling that, that we looked at was making that happen the same time, design-wise. So, our goal, why we're here today and this schedule, and we're being a little pushy, I get that, but the idea is that we, to stay on our schedule for Carson Street, we were going to release the RFP for design tomorrow, and we wanted to make Third Street to be part of that RFP. So, that's, schedule-wise, that's what we're doing. Once the, once the designer consultant is selected for the project, then we will start those discussions as to how Third Street and Carson Street work moving forward. The other discussion we're going to have is, we're leaning towards making the Carson Street project a C Mar project, which means bringing our contractor in before we actually bid the project, and so our discussions with the contractor will start talking about phasing of construction, and, and what makes sense and what doesn't. Specifically, minimal impacts to the businesses, both on Third Street and on Carson Street. So, those questions that you have regarding these schedules are very good ones. We don't have specifics yet, but that will be a big part of the next few months as we go through the design and the C Mar process to determine what makes sense. We, we have got input that it would sure be nice to have this all done ahead of time, and maybe, maybe some events could be going on while the Carson Street project is, is being constructed, and, and I agree that that's, that's nice. I'm just not sure if, if that's the correct direction, if, if construction going on right at Carson Street, if it, you know, what, what impact that would have on a completed pedestrian mall on Third Street, and safety, that sort of thing. So, I don't have the exact answer as to what would happen first, but...
So, you would wait for recommendations to come back through the C Mar process, then?
Yes.
To, to make these final decisions, then it would come back to us for final approval?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
And, I mean, public input throughout that process, it's not just going to be something, a decision made in, you know, a locked room, but, but public input and meeting with businesses and what works best.
Okay, and then my second question, what do you see as the potential risk or pitfalls if the Plaza was constructed prior to the corridor? Do you see any, any risk with that? In other words, I don't want to build the Plaza, and then we go to construct Carson Street if we, if we do that, and then have to tear up the Plaza again because we didn't foresee something, or didn't take something into account. So, that would be an argument for doing both at the same time. So, that's what I'm looking for.
Right.
Is potential risk.
Yes, and I can tell personally, and from construction background, that, that it's, it would be the best, the cleanest, the less risk to do them at the same time. But I understand trying to get something completed so that we can get, you know, some more public, some more interaction Downtown, and, and something going on while Carson Street is tore up. But I think we got to get all those team members around the table. You know, the contractor, our, our concept right now for Carson Street is, is to, you know, we're not going to go through and rip the whole segment of the corridor up at once, we would, we would kind of try and phase it block by block and move ahead. And, and we've heard from businesses, we want, you know, if we're going to have pain, let's, let's have intense pain, but, but for a short period of time, as compared to stretching this out. So, construction-wise, that's, that's kind of how we would move it. Well, if, if that's the way you look at it, then, then this area on Carson Street and Third Street would, you know, all be happening at once, and then we move off of that block and move to the next block. But, once again, I don't want to go on the record of saying that's how we'll do it, but we'll work those out.
Okay, and then my next question is on the timing of the funding for this. What we're being asked to do is to, to allocate all of the available undesignated infrastructure funds from redevelopment to the design and construction of the Third Street Plaza today from fiscal year 1415. My question is, do we need to designate, or do we need to allocate all of the funding, or do we have the ability, or is it a better idea to maybe designate or allocate the amount needed for the design and roll the rest over in case we have an unforeseen project that comes in front of us through redevelopment? So, if anything else comes up, we've already allocated all of the undesignated infrastructure funds for this fiscal year. Seems to me, since we're not constructing the Plaza today, we might be better served to hold back some of those undesignated funds in case something unforeseen comes up, let them roll over and designate them next year when we get into the construction schedule.
Right, and that would be fine. I mean, I mean, we, we have the ability, you could change your mind, even if you designated them all, we can come back and do a budget augmentation and re-designate them, that's not that big a deal. But as far as I know, most of the money won't be spent this fiscal year, is that correct? It's mostly, most of it's going to be spent next fiscal year?
Right, here is, yeah, so the thought on that was, you're out, you're designating the 271,000 from this year's budget to design and construction. That's far more than is necessary for the design, although we don't have a, well, we probably do, we probably could get a closer number to design, but the intent was to, to assign it, to designate it, so that it's not sitting there and appears to be money available for another project, and I think, but, but it's enough to cover the design up until July 1 of next year, after which, assuming the budget goes forward, and you decide that you do want to go forward with the whole project, with the funding, the construction, then, then the full amount will be available after July 1 next year. So, with, with his statement that you could always decide, setting it aside, and now by this action, you'd be setting that aside and not, and taking it away from other projects, but if you could change your mind later and use it for the projects, then...
I mean, you make the decision, so if you want to change the decision, then you can do that.
I'm not worried so much about a discretionary project coming forward through RAC. I'm more concerned about an emergency project that might come up, where we need funding for it. That would be my concern. So, in a best-case scenario, construction would be completed by the end of next summer?
I think in an ideal world, and again, Darren's...
Yeah, that's probably pretty aggressive.
I'm not going to hold you to it, but what I'm trying to get at is, do we need to designate the entire 490,000 from fiscal year 1415 and 1516, or is this going to roll into 1617? Because it's, it's a matter of timing on when we designate funds from each year's budget.
I recommend you do that, designate this year and fiscal year 1516's funds. If we need to readjust down the line, that would be fine. I know Darren would have heartburn for me saying this, but in an ideal world, and the way we kind of looked at it, if we were able to begin construction and be complete before the end of next year, next calendar year, 2015, that would be in terms of being able to build overall support for our other corridor improvements, and be able to show what those corridors are going to look like, and the impact on businesses and our community, I think that would be important. Is it going to be possible? We don't know yet, but, so that's why I would recommend that you do, in fact, commit both those years' funding. If you need to adjust it down the road, we can bring that back, and, and you can, you can do that.
So, Nick P., if we do designate all of the infrastructure, or if we allocate all of the undesignated infrastructure money, 271, 942, to this project, then we still have an ending fund balance of approximately 185,000, and that can be used in case of an emergency?
Well, I'd have to think about that. It just depends, it depends on how much the money is. I mean, you can't allocate ending fund balance, you can't, you can't augment the budget with ending fund balance. So, if you don't appropriate the money, then you can't use it, and that's not considered, that's not considered an unanticipated revenue source. But, I mean, if there's a $200,000 emergency, I mean, we would probably just have to reallocate, you know, some of that other money, but...
Take it out of contingency?
Without being the general fund. So, sure, you could do that, I mean, if, yeah, there's all kinds of possibilities.
Again, I keep coming back to the same question, if we, if we designate all of the... If we designate all of the unallocated funding, what do we do in case of an emergency? That's really my question. Where do we go for funding in case of an emergency?
I'm not really sure what a redevelopment emergency would be.
Me either, but that's what makes it an emergency.
Right, but I mean, I mean, if something that bad happened, then we, you know, we would definitely make do.
Right, the mayor just said an earthquake, and the St. Charles, sorry, and the St. Charles Hotel falls down.
Right, no, if we had an earthquake, then, I mean, the redevelopment authority would probably be the least of our problems. I mean, we have insurance, you know, monies and all kinds of other things that would kick in at that point, if there's, you know, the big one hit. So, I mean, we can be flexible. I probably agree with Nick M. that we should probably just designate the money now, and then, you know, it'll carry forward into next year, we'll budget the money in March, we'll budget the, we'll budget the project money, the undesigned money, up until the amount of the project, and then we just go from there. If there's a problem, then, you know, we'll switch gears at that time. It shouldn't be that big a deal to switch gears.
John?
I think you need to add something new to this project. As far as I'm concerned, this project might bring us up to speed for this year, but it'll be, definitely be obsolete in two years. I would like to see, in this project, definitely, and along all of Carson Street, is city-provided high-speed Wi-Fi. We're putting the pipes in the ground, doesn't take much to put some cable in, stick a server on there. I arrive in town, I'm in a shop, I pull out my laptop or my smartphone, and I sit there and I have Wi-Fi. I bring my kids downtown, they wanna play, most parents pull out some type of electronic device. There's no electronics down there. I think the city ought to be providing that.
I kind of take the opposite view. Sometimes I want to get disassociated with my electronics. I'd rather go where I don't have to have, "Hey, you got Wi-Fi? Get on there, man, come on." Hey, I'd rather say, "You know what? I'm down here, having a good time." I can't really talk, anyway, I'm kidding.
See, and I found that out, Bob, and that's why I consider myself old.
Any further board discussion?
I'd just like to comment, I mean, one, I want to say thank you to the Lopiclos and to the McFadden family. I mean, I know we have a handout here from the McFadden family, and they're just tremendous people, they're really good citizens of our community, and they're visionary, and they've been visionary for years, and to see it come to fruition is really tremendous, and it's not lost on me, you know, that Rob is a marine veteran, and our city manager's a marine veteran, and, you know, it just is, it's a good feel, and I have to say that, for the first time, I think that we are now seeing the benefit of linking state facilities with Carson facilities. Looking across that mall from, you know, you're looking at the fire, you know, the police and fire memorial across the street, and it's gonna be wonderful for people, and it'll be a good face for Carson City, and when people come here for the legislature, they see this, I know they love seeing the ice rink and the lights and everything, they see this, they're gonna know that, you know, this is a welcome community for a lot of different generations to come, and a lot of different age groups to come. So, my hat's off to you, Vern, I think, you know, you guys have done a pretty nice job of giving us a conceptual outline of what you want to do, and, you know, I'm prepared to say, you know, and I think we ought to allocate, I mean, because sometimes, Brad's right, sometimes we run into emergencies, but on the other hand, I guess I've been in government long enough to know that if we don't, the money somewhere goes somewhere else, and so I think we need to say, this is what we're gonna do, to give the people who are donating money, or the landowners down there, the certainty that, you know, this is gonna come to fruition. We've got the tie that, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is, there's no doubt about it, but from a conceptual standpoint, moving it forward, I think you guys have done a nice job, so.
Brad needs to ask a question. And I just want to say thank you to the McFaddens and to the Lopiclos. I think it's huge for this community, so, thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll do it. I'll see if this goes. I'm gonna read what we got here. I move to approve and make a recommendation to the board, supervisors to authorize the expenditure $271,942 from fiscal year 2014-15 redevelopment revolving fund and to authorize the expenditure $218,058 from fiscal year 2015-16 redevelopment revolving fund, subject to the approval of the 2015-16 redevelopment budget by the board of supervisors, and of course, the redevelopment board, for a total of $490,000 to design and construct a pedestrian and events plaza on Third Street between Carson and Curry Streets, and to direct staff to present conceptual and final designs to the redevelopment authority's citizens committee, and for review and recommendations, back to this board.
Second.
A motion in a couple of seconds? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Do we want a motion to name us the McFadden Plaza?
I think that's gonna come back, that's gonna come back before us, so we'll do that. I have one more public comment. If not, I'm gonna turn the gavel back to the mayor, and we adjourn as the redevelopment authority.
Okay, we're now gonna reconvene as the board of supervisors, we're gonna take up item number 23. This is for community development, the office of business development, this is the counterpart to what the motion we just made, this is for the board of supervisors to make. Any additional public comment on this issue? Any additional board comment? Motion's in order.
What's the resolution number, Alan?
Actually, yeah, it's marked as a resolution, but it was not assigned a number, so, it was the last number. The last number. Oh, this is the board one, it'll be 29? 28? It is, it is 2014 R.29.
29, all right, thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2014 R.29, authorizing the expenditure of $271,942 from fiscal year 2014-15 redevelopment revolving fund, and to authorize the expenditure of an additional $218,058 in fiscal year 2015-16 redevelopment revolving funds, subject to approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 budget by the board of supervisors, authorizing a total of $490,000 to design and construct a pedestrian and events plaza on Third Street between Carson Street and Curry Street, as an expenditure incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan.
Motion by supervisor, about second by supervisor Shirk on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. We're now on item 24, concluding public comment. Anybody? The train is gonna start running at 5 o'clock, so, got out of here just in time. Anything else from the board? Anything? Not, unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.